Just convening today, May 20th, 2020's school committee meeting. We will start with roll call of attendance. Giuseppe Jowdy.
Here.
Carol Lewis.
Here.
Riley Donahue.
Here.
Noah Plackton.
Here.
And Anthony Mullen is here as well. So I first want to recognize the live stream broadcast and online stream available through Westwood Media. Thank you as always. It's always on, it's also online at, I won't read the website, but there's a website it's on as well to provide real time public access to the activities in the school committee in accordance with the March 12th, 2020 Executive Order of Governor Baker. I want to also, for anyone who is joining any resident, we will have public participation in a few minutes, but the form is live now. So if you're interested in submitting questions, please submit questions or comments together with your name and address, and we'll get to those in a few minutes as well. Okay, great. With further ado, I will turn over to Superintendent for Superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I want to start the superintendent's report just by updating you on where we are with our high school principal search. So as you know, sadly, Mr. Bevan has announced that he has taken a principalship at Elgonquin Regional High School. We're excited for him. I think it's going to be an exciting change for him and good for his family as well. I'll get to see him a little more, I think. But now we are in the process of identifying the next principal of Westwood High School. So we posted the position last week. We've started the search. I sent out a message to the community last week, also letting them know how they can be involved and engaged in this process. Clearly, the selection of a high school principal is a very important decision. I put a survey out to parents and one to teachers where they could provide some input, the qualities that they would be looking for in the next principal and communicate what's important to them. I asked for volunteers for parents who would like to be involved on the interview committee. I've received, you know, more than a dozen volunteers. So I will be thinking about that in the next few days. It's fantastic to have so much interest. Obviously, the committee is, I have to keep the committee to a reasonable number. So I'll be looking at who's volunteered and trying to make sure we kind of have a representative group. So people may be from different grades, for example. I know that I believe we're going to have a school committee member as well participate on that interview committee, teachers, administrators. The committee will be conducting the interviews on Friday, June 12th. And the goal of the committee will be to identify two to four finalists who will return the following week. We are still thinking through the details, but we will make sure that there are opportunities for all of the constituent groups, parents, students, teachers, to meet the candidates and an opportunity to ask some questions. I've got to figure out in the virtual environment how we'll be doing that, but I will make sure to communicate that. And ideally, we hope to make an announcement by the week of June 22nd. So that is our, our goal. I don't know if anyone has questions about the process?
Emily, excuse me. I just wanted to say. Quick question, how long will Sean be here? When will he be leaving?
Yeah, his last day here is June 30th. He starts his new position on July 1.
And he will be gone at that time, not available for consulting or helping or answering questions, but he's permanently gone?
Well, I think that Sean, you know, I'm sure he'll still take our calls. I'm confident about that. So I'm not worried, worried about it on that front, but he, he will have started a new contract in another place. You know, and I will say, I think we're very fortunate. We have a wonderful administrative team at the high school. And, you know, I, my goal is to have someone in place by July 1st. But if that were delayed for some reason for a couple of weeks, we have lots of people with lots of institutional knowledge who I'm sure can keep things, keep things on track.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm glad we're doing a permanent search because this is the same class, the fresh, the incoming freshman class is the same class that started at the middle school with an interim principal and a new vice principal. So I think, you know, just there may be an echo of this for them. So I just think if the sooner we get someone permanent in place, the better. For the, at least for the, for the freshman, clearly for the process, but particularly for the freshman class.
Yeah, that certainly factored into my thinking about how to go about this.
Do you think the pool will be strong? I think part of the challenge three, two years ago was the pool. This late stage, this could be a challenge. I mean, you won't know yet, I guess, but.
I just don't know yet, honestly. I mean, you know, ideally, we would have gone out a couple of months ago. That just doesn't happen to be our situation. And, you know, my experience doing these searches is I keep in mind that really what you need is one fantastic candidate who's the right fit, right? And so I think it's always, you know, worth it to put the time and energy into the process and, and, you know, see who, who's out there. So I'm feeling optimistic.
Giuseppe? Yeah, I just want to say, I just want to thank Sean for his years of service. I know that a lot of people would be very sad to see him go. I know that the kids loved him. He did a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'd like to, sometime in the future, a year from now, whatever, to have a thank you party for Sean. Bring him back, back him formally. We can apologize to him that we can't do it now, but we'd like to have a way of thanking him. So hold open a date, Sean, for us to thank you.
Sounds like a great idea.
Can I jump in? I, I just want to thank Sean too. He was one of the easiest people to work with that I think I've ever worked with. Always accessible, always upbeat, willing to go the extra mile. And, and I, I will miss him. He was, he certainly did a lot for the high school. And I echo what Giuseppe said, that the kids loved him. And, and yeah, he'll be missed. So, but thank you, Sean.
Yeah.
Good luck.
For sure. Okay. So moving on, I want to talk a little bit about COVID-19 impacts and things that we're thinking about and, and planning for. So as you know, the governor on this past Monday rolled out the beginning of this four-phase plan for reopening the state. I'll be honest, I had hoped that we would hear more specific details about some questions that we have about school, both in the fall and also for our summer programming. Clearly, this is going to be a process and there still is a lot of uncertainty, which is creating some challenges. There is a working group at the state level now that is specifically focused on reopening schools. And we are told that this group has started to meet and that they will be providing guidance in four categories. They've outlined them as physical and virtual learning environments, teaching and learning, operations and business services, and behavioral health and social emotional learning. We were told that we should expect that guidance to be coming by the end of June. I will tell you that there was sort of a collective outcry from superintendents that we really are feeling like we need some guidance before the end of June, that there is a lot to be thinking about and planning for right now. And the sooner that we can get some parameters and some understanding of what the situation may be in the fall and what will be required and expected of schools, the better. So I'm hopeful, I hear that that feedback was received and acknowledged, and I'm hopeful that the guidance might be coming out a little sooner than the end of June, but it will be a while. We really aren't entirely sure what this fall will look like. And so we are thinking internally about different models. And we think that what we're going to need to do is to basically identify various scenarios and start making some plans and thinking about what those impacts will be. We're reading every bit of guidance and information we can get our hands on from, say, the CDC. I know a lot of information is about to come out from OSHA, a lot of things to consider. We've started to have some initial conversations just to identify, like, what are the questions and the categories of things to be thinking about? And we, as a district leadership team, have the all-day retreat scheduled in a few days to really start, you know, thinking about some specifics. We imagine that after that retreat, that we will be able to create a framework of what needs to be done or considered and some timelines for that, and that we will begin to form working groups to start implementing those plans. I think that we will need to have some sort of advisory group that includes teachers, parents, I'll be reaching out to the local public health officials, the town, just to make sure that we're all working collaboratively and making sure we have all of the bases covered. So we intend to get rolling on that fairly soon. I would characterize it as, you know, it's frustrating because it's like we're trying to solve problems, but we aren't entirely sure what the problems are. And so that is, you know, it's a little bit, a little bit puzzling. But we know we, we are going to have to do some things, have some plans in place, start some purchasing some supplies, and we're, we're working on it at this point. We've been told that the initial focus of the state working group is on what programming might be possible in the summer in schools. I just want to remind everybody that at this point, the governor has closed all school buildings for instruction with students through June 29th. So we are not permitted to have kids in working with adults at this point, at least until June 29th. I heard the governor say on Monday that in a couple of weeks, the state would release guidance about summer camps. So I think that could be informative for us. But I'll be honest, I am feeling like it's starting to get a little late for some of this guidance for summer programs that theoretically would be starting July 1st. Right now, we are actively planning for in-person extended school year programs. So that is our educational programming in the summer that serves some of our special education students. This is clearly a really important program for those kids and families. And we think that getting E S Y often running should be our top priority for the summer. So if we are permitted to have kids in the buildings, our plan would be to do in-person, face-to-face instruction, probably with a bunch of social distancing guidelines, perhaps some P P E measures. Frankly, though, we think that it could be a good sort of soft reopening for us to start working through some of the logistics that we may face in the fall. If for some reason, face-to-face E S Y is not possible, we also continue to plan for remote learning. So I want to assure people that services will continue for those students in the summer in some form. Summer enrichment is still up in the air at this point. I want to be honest that I think that it is possible that we won't be able to run summer enrichment as we contemplate the fact that guidance has not been forthcoming yet. And we have to think about if we had a two-week turnaround time, where we would put our time and our resources. And we think E S Y is our priority right now. In addition, we think the summer is going to be very busy operationally. So we may have to do some things in terms of retrofitting our classrooms if we think we're planning for a socially-distanced environment, for example. So we are, we are thinking through that. If we, for instance, were required to run summer enrichment with class sizes of no more than 10, including the instructor, that would be a challenge for us operationally, just in terms of the financial model and staffing as well. So we'll, we'll see when the guidance comes out, but we're thinking about those things. I've also reached out to the town to have a conversation about recreation programs in the summer because we are, you know, we have always historically been happy to share our facilities with REC. If they're moving forward with those programs, though, we do need to have a clear understanding of what the implications are for us operationally, what might be required of us to support those town programs in terms of enhanced cleaning protocols or disinfecting things. And so we need to have a collaborative conversation to think about what, what we think we're able to do and what their needs are. So we'll, we will be working on, on all of that. So let me just pause there and see if there are any questions at this point.
First, Emily, I would like to thank you for all you're doing. I think the smartest thing you're doing is thinking of all the possible options and somehow trying to prepare for them. The statistics that caused me to pause is that 25 to 50% of the people who are asymptomatic, they're infectious, they can give you the coronavirus, they don't know they have it, and they're happy being healthy. But they're kids and they're adults, but they infect other people. That's what makes testing so crucial. Even with testing, they find out half the tests are false negative. They, they come out negative, but they're really positive. The statistic I heard that was very interesting, in Germany where they've sent kids back to school, every kid in Germany is getting tested twice a week, partly to see if they've picked it up or not. Can we, is that even a standard Massachusetts would consider? We don't have the technology to do that yet. We don't have the capability, but that's what one country that has sent all their kids back to school is doing. And I think it'd be worth asking the state panel, are the Germans crazy or could we do this or never do it? The other question comes up is teachers, some of the older teachers who have risk factors like their age or they have diabetes or this or that, is this to help the environment to get them back in with a whole bunch of kids? The, so I think these are, you know, questions have yet to be answered, but they'd be worth putting to the state committee that's thinking about doing all of this. In today's patch in Norwood, they announced that the Norwood Hospital will be doing 1,000 tests of Norwood residents who aren't, you know, referred by their doctor. They don't think they, now these people who think they want to be tested. And I did ask our health commissioner in Westwood, are we going to get tests? He's looking into it right now. But this whole idea of who's getting the test, how do you get access to them? And should the teachers and the students be at the top of the list? Is that even an issue? Do they care about it? We do have 99 cases in Westwood that have been reported with coronavirus. I don't, no one knows the details, but that's, the state public health department puts these statistics out. It's not a, a big population of people as bad as Chelsea might be and others. But I think it's, and a lot of those questions need to be put to the state committees looking at this to give us some guidance. Because what you're doing right now is, what you have to do is consider every possibility, one of which, we may not have kids come back. The colleges, Notre Dame and B C are going to bring the kids back. Other colleges have said, there's no way we're going to bring them back. Probably know better in July and August what they're doing. But, you know, that's, to plan that we may not be able to bring the kids back is, is one of the options we got to look for. But I think that you're looking into all of these different things. I think it's, that's all you can do. And I commend you for doing it and thank your administrative staff and your teachers for trying to look into all of this stuff.
Yeah, there's a lot of uncertainty. And, you know, I'll tell you another issue that a lot of superintendences have raised is that, you know, we can sort of sit in isolation in, in our own meetings and come up with all kinds of alternative schedules and plans potentially. But if our faculty with their kids spread out in all these other communities are going to school that has, have different schedules and different plans, we're going to have, you know, trouble with our workforce. That there, there does need to be some kind of coordinated effort to work through some of these reopening issues. And I can tell you that the State Superintendents Association is clearly articulating many of these issues to the Commissioner of Education and, you know, so I, I can only hope that we'll get some good, you know, some good recommendations from the working group. But in the meantime, we will just start doing our own planning as well.
Good.
Stay tuned for more on, on that. I do think, you know, this summer is going to be a lot different in terms of like the rhythm of what we're working on than in the past. And I, I think we've got a lot of, a lot of things to start, to start thinking through. Okay, so I want to say a few things about graduation and seniors, onto happier topics. So of course, we talked last time about the fact that clearly the situation has had some difficult impacts for our graduating seniors for whom some of the milestones that we know are really important have had to be postponed, or we've had to get creative and sort of think about them differently. So I want to tell you about some of the things that are happening. I'm going to try to share my screen here for a second. Let me see. See if I can make this happen. Here we go. So you may have heard that on May 8th, the high school faculty did a faculty and staff parade for seniors. Here are some pictures that were in the local press. I don't know why that one isn't coming up. Let's see if I can get it. So the, the faculty and staff decked out their cars and they had some, they had a parade, different parade routes. And they went all over town, made sure that they were sort of passing each senior's house. And really, it was sort of like their, their love poem, I guess I would say, to the seniors, just to say that we're thinking about them. And they had a nice reception. People were out in the foot of their driveway and had signs and, you know, were kind of clapping and waving as well. In addition to sort of four different routes in Westwood, I think about 20 cars also were dispatched to Boston so that we made sure that we went past the homes of our students who attend through the Metco program. And I'm told that the faculty got a big reception in Boston. So that was really fun and exciting as well. And I know that Amy Davenport and Kate Holmes were instrumental in organizing that. So I, I thank them for their, their efforts. As for graduation, so Mr. Bevan and the high school administration have a graduation task force that has 22 seniors on it and five teachers. They've been meeting twice weekly to make a plan, not just for graduation, but for all kinds of senior events. And I will say, I think really the top priority for Mr. Bevan has been to listen to student voices and to try to come up with some fun celebratory things that we could do that kids indicated they were excited about. So I think it's safe to say there were some ideas that were met with, you know, a lukewarm response. And we have kept brainstorming until we've come up with things where the consensus was, that sounds great. So that's, I'm happy to say that's where we are today. So I just want to remind people that we have now determined that we will be attempting to have a traditional graduation ceremony on August 9th. That is the plan. And that would be just like always, the kind of graduation that we always do. I think that there may be some people who are nervous that because Mr. Bevan is departing, that somehow graduation will fall apart. But I, I want to assure everybody that Westwood High School has done graduation every year for many, many years. And we definitely know how to do that ceremony. And in fact, Amy Davenport, who is our dean of students at the high school, is the graduation coordinator and has done it many times. And so she and Nicole Haberman and other high school staff are working on that event. Amy is our point person. And believe me, when Amy's the point person, everything, everything works out. She is detail-oriented. So we'll be all set there. And also, we have invited Mr. Bevan to come back on August 9th. And he has accepted graciously that invitation. And having accepted it, we asked him if he would just like to preside and do all the things that he would usually do at graduations. So he will be there. He is the principal for the class of 2020. And he has said that he won't miss it. So we will be doing that on, on August 9th. In addition, the school's been busy planning other several events. So this Friday, which would have been sort of the last day of classes for seniors, is senior superlative day. And I'm told that seniors will be coming in their cars to the parking lot at 9:45 for a socially-distanced event where they're remaining in their cars. The senior superlatives are going to be announced. These are voted on by the class, things like, you know, I don't know what they are now, but best dressed, you know, that kind of stuff, class clown. And so those are going to be announced through the, over the P A, through the press box. We have some faculty who will be running around, putting gold stars on the cars of the recipients of the senior superlatives. And then we've been in contact with Kiss 108 FM. At the appointed hour, when it is time for the seniors to drive out, they will be doing a shout-out to the Westwood class of 2020. And they will be playing a song that was voted on by the seniors. I do know what it is, but I'm afraid that it might be a surprise. So I'm not going to blow it and say what the song is. But they're going to be playing the senior song for kids, and we'll do it over the P A so that they can depart to that music. And for those people who don't know, that's sort of customary on the last day of classes for seniors. The seniors choose a song and, and we let them gather in the lobby typically, and we play the song to play them out. So we're trying to replicate that kind of event. They are, then they've got some plans in place to collect back some things like Chromebooks and distribute caps and gowns and whatnot. June, sort of first through third, there are some other things in the works for some senior recognition night, but I don't have the details of that yet. June 4th and 5th, we are doing senior photo ops with diploma. So I'm not sure of all the details. I think there's going to be like one of those big gold frames. I think Mr. Mao was the photographer, but kids will be able to come individually and have their picture taken in the frame. These portraits are going to be used for a senior slideshow that we're going to be doing at class day. I want to say we will be giving kids their diploma on those dates because there are some students who, you know, they've, they've earned the diploma. They've finished the requirements for the degree. And they need to receive their high school degree in order to pursue their post-secondary plans. We have some kids who aren't going to be able to come on August 9th. But I want to assure people that for the graduation ceremony, just like always, we will call people's names, they will cross the stage, we'll then give them their embossed diploma case and, you know, do the big, do the big diploma, you know, award at graduation. And then we, on June 7th, which would have been the graduation date, that will now be class day. Right now, we're calling it class day at night. But I got a note that said, stay tuned, the name may be changing. I don't know what the plan is. But it is a drive-in movie theater concept. So we will be inviting seniors and their families to come to the high school, one car per family. And we're working with a company to set up a giant drive-in movie theater screen. And there will be all kinds of things happening. We'll be giving out the awards that we usually give out on class day. We'll be showing the senior video, doing other celebratory things. And then there will be, at the end of the ceremony, a recessional of cars that are, will be led by police and fire. We thank them for their willingness to be part of this. My understanding is the recessional will kind of head down 109 towards Bubbling Brook. And I think the kids' cars will be decorated and it should be a really fun, fun event. I want to recognize people who are part of Westwood Community in Action, which, as you know, is an organization that's, I don't know, how long has it been around, Giuseppe? 30 years, maybe? Something like that? I don't know. Like Franchise, I remember, was instrumental in starting it.
Kathy Darwepel, Franchise, Mary Lucenza Pietro, so probably 92, 93.
Yeah, yeah. So it's a, it's a wonderful group. It's a group of parent volunteers. And it's a nonprofit organization. Really, their sole miss, mission has been to create an all-night graduation party every year for our. To create an all-night graduation party every year for our seniors and they do a lot of fundraising, a tremendous amount of work. Um, to make this happen and we always appreciate their efforts, this year obviously it has to look a little different. And um, they've had some great ideas. I, they have some things that they're planning that I think are gonna make a big splash. But again, I'm reluctant to say what they are because I'm not sure I'm authorized to reveal that, um, I think some of them are surprised, but. Be on the lookout around town um, for some things. Uh, but one thing that I know that they would love is if we could garner some energy um, and support. Throughout the community on June seventh for Class Day, just for the whole town of Westwood to show our support for seniors. If people could kind of make Westwood green and white, maybe put out some decorations. And you know, the seniors will be going to the high school for the Class Day at Night event. That starts around eight, so we're thinking if folks could pencil in around seven thirty. Maybe to be at the foot of your driveway in your neighborhoods and we could do like a senior send-off. Um, by neighborhood, just uh, similar to the, you know, seven PM clap for all the medical workers. Um, if we could plan to sort of send kids off to Class Day. Uh, and be out to show them that support, I think that would be fantastic. And the town um, has offered to work with us, we're gonna send out a um. A reverse nine-one-one call to all residents in town. Letting them know that June seventh is Class Day and asking people just to be part of that and really make it a community um, event. So that is all in the works, um. I will say, I know that there, there had been a lot of enthusiasm from um, some parents to see if we could do a caravan of cars or a car parade. For seniors, which my understanding is. There are some other communities who have decide, many have decided to go. Forward with graduation in June as like a drive-through kind of event and the parades are often a part of that. And we did have some conversation with the town about trying to do something similar. On June seventh for Class Day, um. And you know, folks were receptive to the conversation and happy to meet with us about it. I, I have to say, I have personally never organized a major parade with two hundred and fifty cars, so I um. I, I think maybe I didn't understand what was involved operationally. Um, but it was clear from those conversations that as much as people wanted to be supportive, that we weren't gonna be able to. Secure the necessary sort of additional resources to have the proper safety features in place. For a two hundred and fifty car parade on June seventh. And I think they, the town has left the door open to the possibility of a different date, if that's something that the community is interested in. Organizing, I will say, right now, the school department's focus is, we're trying to make Class Day on June seventh as fantastic as possible and um. And make graduation happen on August ninth and make sure that it's a fun and celebratory week for kids. Um, so that's where we are and I, I want to thank everybody. It's really taken a tremendous effort from a lot of people to make this come together and I, I thank Mr. Bevan and. Ms. Haberman and Ms. Davenport and all the seniors and teachers who've been on the committee, they've been meeting twice a week and um. I think they've come up with some exciting plans.
I just, I just want to say that, you know, I know this is really disappointing for the kids and for the parents. But I have to commend you and your staff for all the work that you've done. And it sounds like you're planning out an awesome event for these kids, maybe. Maybe it'll be, I don't want to say better, it'll be different, but spread over many days and uh, it sounds very exciting and. I just want to thank you for all the work that you guys have done to make this happen.
Thanks, I think it's gonna be fun.
Thank the kids that have been helping to organize it too and uh. And uh, and the teachers that have helped out and I think. The touching thing that I did read was the thing that disappointed the kids the most was. The year ended suddenly and they never had a chance to say goodbye to their friends. Uh, and they didn't have a chance to say goodbye to the teachers, you know, so giving them that opportunity. Uh, in a scrambled way, it's wonderful to try to make every effort to do that.
Right, yeah, yeah, I know, that's, it's been. Really hard for uh, for everybody here and I think, you know, what, what. What Mr. Bevan tells me, he clearly heard from kids on the committee was. As we were thinking about what to do for them during, you know, this time in Class Day, they wanted something where they were all in the same place at the same time. And um, you know, as much as we, we were sort of saying, let's have a parade, um. They, they kind of reported that. They wanted to do something together and that's when we pivoted to this drive-in. Movie concept and Mr. Bevan told me that he asked uh, during the Zoom call with the committee. For people to put into the chat feature on a scale of one to five, how excited they were about this concept. And they were, it was all fives and one six and a half, so we took that as a. As a good sign that we had finally kind of landed on something that. That is gonna be meaningful, I hope, for kids.
I think the committee itself is also, uh, I, I think. One idea they might want to have is that maybe sometime a year from now. Uh, usually you don't wait till five years to have your class reunion. But the committee might want to keep in touch with each other to. Maybe have a class reunion that all the teachers are invited to. Uh, in a year when everybody can gather, uh, and maybe touch each other, uh, and hug each other, uh, a year from now, hopefully sooner. But I think, you know, keep that in the cards, I think, uh, as a possibility, because this is a unique. Time uh, that no one else has ever been through before in this class, you know, how can you make up a little bit for what they've lost?
Yeah, it's a nice idea, Charlie.
So great, thank you for that update, um, thanks for all the hard work I know between the parents, the kids and the uh, administration. Is there anything else with superintendent this far?
That's it.
Alright, great, um, good, so. I am, now is the time for public participation, um, there's a form. Uh, posted at www.westwood.k twelve dot ma dot usa slash live, if there's any comments. Currently I see none, uh, I'll give folks um, just a few seconds if they do have any questions or comments. Um, maybe finally the good weather's affecting our turnout, um. I understand there's better things to do when it's eight months for this weather, but um, let me just give it thirty seconds. Um, and then I'll close it, John, just let me just give people like thirty seconds if there's anything that comes in. And we can do the Jeopardy count down clock. All right, refresh, it doesn't look like anything, so why don't we um, close out the public comment? Um, John? Okay, thank you, um, good, so now we can move on to discussion items. And we will be starting with the discussion of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget adjustments.
Okay, great, I'm gonna share my screen, I have to say, when I share my PowerPoint slides, I then can't see all of you, so um. Obviously, if I. Stop me if uh, if something isn't working properly here, um. Alright, are you able to see my? Screen, okay, fantastic. Alright, um. So as we've been talking about at the last couple of school committee meetings, um, you know, clearly. A lot has changed in the world since um, we were having our budget discussions back in the fall and winter. And um, you know, we're, we're faced with some challenges in terms of the budget and. So what I want to do tonight is um, give you a sense of. My thinking on where we are with the budget and provide some context and then um. Make some recommendations that have been developed um. By the district leadership team about some adjustments that I think we need to make for FY twenty-one. Um. You know, I think it's safe to say that we are in a situation that is unprecedented and unanticipated and um. So the landscape has, has changed quite a bit. You know, key for me is that the budget landscape right now has many unknown variables, um. We're sort of in uncharted waters here, but um. You know, we've got to be thinking about chapter seventy funding, so that of course is the um, the state aid to schools. And um, when I did these slides, I said that the state revenue projections were down by three to four billion dollars for next year. I have to tell you, I'm now hearing that that projection is five to six billion dollars, um, so clearly there are going to be some. Some challenges at, at the state level. Right now, we don't have any clear estimate or information about how large the resulting impact on chapter seventy funds to schools. Will be, um, you know, but I think it's safe to say that um. Certainly, the, the financial situation with the state and the economy is going to impact that chapter seventy funding and um. You know, it's, it's interesting because you may recall that um. A few months ago, we were talking about the passage in Massachusetts of the Student Opportunity Act, which was really hailed as kind of this historic. Um. Piece of legislation that was designed to infuse um, you know, significant additional funds. To, to public schools and so in fact, during the budget development process, we anticipated that we'd be an increase after study funds. It seems clear to me now that not only will we not get the increase, but that we should probably be anticipating a cut. But how big a cut is really a question mark at this point. But I just wanted to provide a frame of reference that, you know, the last time that we had an economic downturn, which arguably. This situation is uh, more serious than it was then. But in two thousand and eight, that chapter seventy at that time was cut by ten percent. So you know, I think it's reasonable to assume that um. We would at least experience a similar impact. I've heard people throw around ten percent as a number, I've heard other people throw around twenty percent, um. It, it's clear to me though, that it's just not clear, so we have to be thinking about that.
And I'm, right, so that, just what we were talking about today, the, so if we, if we get six million, just to, what's the, it's like six million or five million, what do we get now, so just to get conceptualized?
So round numbers, we thought that we would get about six million um. This year, so you get a sense of the scope of what we're, of what we're looking at here. The other um, important piece is that our school operating budget includes about one point five million dollars in federal funding grants and um. And in, in something called circuit breaker reimbursement, which we've talked about a lot before, circuit breaker reimbursement is um. It's uh, it's funds that we get to reimburse us for very high-cost special education. Uh, costs out of district tuitions and et cetera, um. And we also um, have. Built into our operating budget revenue that comes from other revolving accounts. Um, so these other sources are uh, part, are built in as offsets in our operating budget and. We're significantly concerned right now um. That there are going to be decreases in these funds as well. Um, so again, to provide sort of a frame of reference, our circuit breaker offset. Proposed for FY twenty-one is seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, circuit breaker is always a little bit iffy, right, we're always talking about keeping our eye on that. Right now, the reimbursement rate is seventy-five percent. But again, as a frame of reference, the last time we experienced uh, an economic downturn, at that time, the reimbursement rate was cut to thirty percent. And so, you know, again, I think that we can at least take that as some indication. Of um, what we might be experiencing here. Um, so that is um, that's important for us. We are significantly concerned that that would be um, substantially decreased. And then finally, we just have uncertainty about revenue that's generated through other revolving accounts if next year is disrupted, so you know that we um. For instance, we uh, have people who use our buildings and we collect a building use fee, well, we, we think we can't count on that kind of. Revenue. So things are looking very uncertain on the revenue side, um. And then the other piece of it is that our anticipated costs or our potential costs. Have changed since the FY twenty-one budget was developed. As a result of this unprecedented world situation, so just for example. You know, we, it's safe to assume that we're gonna need to implement enhanced cleaning protocols that may require additional cleaning equipment. Supplies, maybe washing stations, we may need new um, additional personnel hours to make this happen. Um, we think probably we will incur increased special education costs related to compensatory services and E S Y. As a result of um, the disruption this spring in instruction. And then we're thinking about all kinds of other things, you know, if we had a disrupted year next year. And we needed to continue to do some kind of remote environment, would we have additional technology costs? Might we have disrupted or alternate schedules, the need for social distancing in classrooms or on buses? Um, you know, staff who require or qualify for leaves of absence and. You know, many of those things have costs associated with them, so just for example. Um. You know, right now, we can't socially distance kids on buses with the number of buses that we have. And so it could change our transportation costs if we had to do something different, if we were running an alternate schedule. I've heard people talk about sort of a double sessions model. You know, that would double our transportation costs, um, so. We, we have to think about potential loss of revenue and then we also think, have to think about how our costs have changed. We think that this impact could be substantial, but they are difficult to estimate with any certainty right now. With the current level of information that we have, we can only hope that things will become clearer um, with time. I also want to say a word about the CARES Act, um, which is federal legislation. Um, there's a portion that called uh, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And so far. This federal relief to schools has been tied to the Title One formula and so Title One, you may recall um. Is a part of um. The Elementary and Secondary Education Act, it is um, it refers to funds that come to school districts to support um. That it's tied to the proportion of low-income families in a district. So Westwood is not a Title One district, we don't receive Title One money. And because the way the federal relief is being distributed is tied to the Title One formula. We have received very little funds. Um, or, I mean, nobody's received anything yet, but we are slated to receive very um. You know, not, not very much at all, so I, I put some things up here as frame of reference, our amount is twenty thousand. Which it appears sort of everybody got twenty thousand no matter what and then um, different districts. Um, have different allocations from there and it's based on things like the size of the district, but also again tied to this Title One. Formula, um, so I don't think that we can count on. This significant infusion of um. Of federal relief and I say that only because you may remember that back in two thousand and nine. Westwood actually did get quite a bit um, in the way of, of federal um, stimulus money. I mean, I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars, something like that, it was, it was pretty substantial, but um. Nothing like that has been forthcoming thus far. So a, a superintendent colleague of mine in neighboring desk district kind of put it succinctly, we don't know how much money we'll have. And we don't know what we're trying to budget for, I think that pretty much uh, tells the story at this point. So with that context, we have been doing a, a lot of thinking about how to stabilize the budget. So I would say that the first thing is that um, we need to have town meeting. And of course, town meeting is where the school department proposed budget is voted on and hopefully approved by the voters. Um, and town meeting has been delayed because of um, this situation in the world. Um, and I know that the town is working hard to try to make a provision for town meeting by the end of the fiscal year. So that we have a budget for FY twenty-one and clearly, that's really important um, from our perspective. Through the budget steering process, we've been speaking with the town and this is the good news. So the town has indicated that it's prepared to fill the gap created by a decrease in chapter seventy funding. And I will say that is really very good news. And I think we're very lucky to be in Westwood, which is a well managed community where the town really has been preparing for a rainy day for a long time and is in a position to provide us with stabilization funds. And I think that that's a much better situation than a lot of my colleagues are dealing with in some other communities. So, you know, what I'm going to be talking about and proposing tonight is is based on that assumption that in fact, when we find out what the chapter seventy cut is, that the town will be able to fill that gap with stabilization funds. And therefore, that we will be able to get our FY twenty one budget passed with the same bottom line number that the school committee. So that's that is our assumption at this point. And obviously, if for some reason, as the picture changes, that changes, then we would need to have another conversation. Where that leaves us, though, is that we do need to change how we allocated funds in the proposed FY twenty one budget. Because we're going to need to do two things. First, we have to backfill gaps that will be created by offsets that we think are going to be cut or where the revenue stream is going to be significantly lower than we thought, like circuit breaker. And we need to address emerging needs and costs. So there are things that we will need to allocate funds for that we didn't know about when we developed the FY twenty one budget. This is, of course, challenging because a school's budget is mostly comprised of salaries. So we talk about this every year. You know, about eighty five percent typically of a typical school operating budget is about salaries because we're really sort of a, you know, people are our most important resource. And so it's hard to think about how to address that budget issue without looking at positions. So the district leadership team had a had a couple of meetings. We had some discussions and we thought it would be important first to develop some guiding principles that we would use as we had to make some difficult decisions. And I just want to share them with you. Obviously, we sort of have kids at the heart of our thinking. So our principles, we said we would make decisions around hiring and scheduling this spring that will allow us to preserve programs, stabilize the budget, and adapt to this new unprecedented environment. To the extent possible, we will maintain class sizes within the school committee guidelines. And if it's not possible to do so, that we would continue to prioritize reasonable class sizes in early grades, in grades K to two. And that's because, you know, we we work on early literacy and numeracy skills with that younger population. And we know that that instruction has been disrupted this spring. So we want to make sure that we place, you know, our priority there in K to two. That we would also prioritize class sizes at moments of transition, like kids are moving to middle school, moving to high school, and also for some of our vulnerable populations. We want to make sure that we're making now hiring and staffing choices that are sustainable, given upcoming enrollment trends and the potential for elementary consolidation. So if we make choices that we have to live with for a while, we're trying to sort of think ahead and foreshadow. So you'll see that a lot of a lot of our choices have to do with high school staffing. And that's because as the enrollment at the high school has been increasing over the last few years, we staffed up at the high school along with that trend. And the high school enrollment has now reached its peak and is supposed to start to decline. And so if we're making reductions in staff, we're thinking, well, we'll make those reductions first in places that we anticipated. We probably would be doing that in the next couple of years anyway. We've decided that we would like to prioritize maintaining student mental health and social emotional programming and services. This has obviously been a tough and disrupted time for all of us. And we want to make sure that we have the necessary supports in place for kids when they return to school. We want to carefully consider high school student elective choices. And to the extent possible, fill our elective sections using alternate choices if we have to, rather than running very small classes, which sometimes in the past, we've been fortunate that we've been able to do. If there's something that a small number of kids are interested in, we like to be able to provide those kinds of experiences. We may not be able to provide some of those very small classes going forward.
So Emily, on those, just so I'm clear.
Yeah.
So that doesn't necessarily mean that we are getting rid of some of the electives. Maybe we would just have fewer sections, bigger classes.
So I I I both potentially. You know, our 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 first choice obviously would be to retain like the breadth of elective offerings that we have. And we do work hard at that. But, you know, I I think at this point, it would be considered a luxury if, for example, we had, you know, seven kids who were really interested in something. I don't think we would be able to dedicate the resources necessarily to that. We would open up another section of something else that could accommodate, you know, twenty twenty two kids. And so our our last guiding principle here is, actually, it's not the last one, next to last. To the extent possible, we want to maintain momentum on important priorities and initiatives, recognizing that probably new initiatives for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one will be put on hold. I think that's for a lot of reasons, not just budget, but also because, you know, we're going to be working to kind of stabilize the teaching and learning environment as well. And then finally, the last bullet is with all of the above in mind, examine what can be accomplished through attrition as opposed to laying people off. So this is this is our thinking. And we used these ideas when we took a look at what we might do. So I'll I'll tell you. Well, so here's the strategy. So with all that in mind, at this point, I've I've told the district that we have have implemented a hiring freeze. Normally, this would be sort of the spring hiring season. But we think it's prudent at this point to not do that. And what we've done is we've engaged in a process of of looking at what the educational impact would be of not filling positions that will be vacant due to retirements, resignations, non renewals, or positions that we had newly proposed in the budget but haven't hired yet. So we've looked at all of that. And our strategy really is just to not fill those positions, except there were a few that when we looked at the impact, we said, you know, the impact of that is really untenable. And we do think that we need to hire those positions. So it's a hiring freeze, I would say, with a few very strategic exceptions is where we are right now. And so the plan would be, obviously pending this discussion tonight, to to start creating a master schedule and making teaching assignments based on that assumption. And we do kind of need to get to work on that. Just because that that's a bit of a process, particularly at the middle school and high school to create that master schedule. But then if there is more certainty at the state and federal level by August, then we could consider if there were positions that could be filled. But I have to tell you, you know, I really do think that we need to be conservative and make a master schedule and teaching assignments that we think we can afford next year. Because, you know, the worst case scenario would be that we find ourselves partway into next year and, you know, have a financial picture where we think we have to make mid year cuts. And that obviously would be, you know, a terrible scenario. And so I I think we need to think ahead and do what's prudent at this point. We also will carefully examine non salary items for elimination. And we're also having conversations about deferring purchasing. So holding off and waiting and seeing where we are mid year when possible. And then obviously, as I talked about during my superintendent's report, continue to make projection about next year's needs and costs by engaging in planning for various reopening scenarios and structures and really seeing if we can get, you know, more clarity on what those costs might be. And I think what this is related to is frankly assessing the level of financial risk that the school committee is comfortable with at this point. Because we we have to make some guesses based on frankly very incomplete data right now about what what school is going to look like next year. And we want to work collaboratively with our bargaining units. We're currently in negotiations. And I will just say that I just continue to be impressed with the folks who work in our district. Our our bargaining units have been collaborative and reasonable and realistic about the situation that we're in. And I really appreciate, really appreciate that.
Emily, a question. You didn't put anything about capital, right? We're going to have one point three million in capital.
Yeah.
We'll think strategically about technology, additional technology investments. I guess is that a different conversation?
Yeah. I think that's a different conversation. But I but yes, we're definitely thinking about that as well. And, you know, thinking that we probably will have to reprioritize some of the summer projects that we had intended to do. So I would suggest that maybe we have a conversation about that at our next meeting. To think about, think about that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so yeah, yes.
Just the with regard to the what's going on now in remote learning for some groups that are really difficult, I think, to be innovative, creative with. And that's the special ed kids are there. There's a large number and range of kids. How well are we doing there? Are there ways we can improve on that? And and the MetLife kids, are they doing all right in this remote learning? Or are they everything moving along fine? Are there any needs to rethink ways to improve on those?
Yeah. Well, Abby, should feel free to jump in here. But, you know, we've been in close collaboration with the CPAC because we also were very interested in how things are going for special education students. And I had a meeting, actually, you were on that call, Charlie, with the PTO presidents and the representatives from CPAC just this week. And I can tell you, the feedback that they've given us is that they feel that the school district is really doing a good job providing special education services in a challenging environment. And, you know, having said that, it's a challenging environment. And so I would say it is not going perfectly. And, you know, really is hard for families right now. So Abby, I don't know if you want to say anything more about that.
I would just, I would say that for many students, it is, you know, going and happening. There are students for whom it is not a good instructional match. And the truth of that is that we need to get them in front of teachers in person, which is why the focus on E S Y is so important. And I very much appreciate that Emily's willing to keep that at the forefront. We did put out a survey to parents, you know, and many people said they would be comfortable with coming in for in person E S Y if there were appropriate interventions and supports in place. And so we're gonna, you know, move heaven and earth to make that happen if at all possible. So that's really the answer for me is getting kids in front of teachers whenever we can. So.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's absolutely key. So.
Can I ask? Abby, are we required to provide that if the parent has? If if who makes a determination of if it's going well or not for the child?
Oh, well, so every student has an I E P team. And that team knows the student well, and the parents are part of that team. And we anticipate that in the fall, we will be back in in person school. And those teams will meet even if we weren't in in person, they can meet virtually. But they will do a kid by kid analysis of how did it go? What is the impact of this time? And that's how it'll get sorted, Joseph.
Okay, so usually, you have to sign off, what, at the end of the school year?
So I so an I E P could be revised at any time during the school year. It can happen along through the year. And we would we anticipate having many meetings in the fall to have exactly that conversation for students. And frankly, having it, you know, when we can virtually, if if it's helpful. But I think, you know, my goal is to get back to school and and teach students. And, you know, that is what we're working towards.
And Abby, are teams meeting virtually this spring?
Yep, so right now, we're meeting virtually for what are called annual reviews mostly. Those are the annual meetings. But we also are taking the preschoolers. If you think about the beginning of the the pipeline, right? Those guys have to come in, so we're figuring out how to do that. And we also have some students who are in the process of being reevaluated. And when we can, we're actually meeting for them too. So, yep, people are having team meetings via Zoom and Google Hangouts every day.
I have a question. So and it's a little bit, I mean, it's on topic, but it isn't. And it's really about years past, we've talked about summer learning. We've talked about summer reading. We've had issues with that over the years and what kids should be doing over the summer. Is there any ramp up for the summer just across the board? Because we've had this remote learning and and, you know, it's not the same as as in person learning. As do we have any ramp up in terms of summer assignments for kids? You know, going into the next grade as opposed to, you know, for a while there, I think we had maybe one book or whatever, but maybe higher expectations to ensure that we're in a good place in the fall.
So I have to say, Carol, honestly, I don't think that we have had that conversation yet about summer assignments. The the thing that we're working through right now is figuring out how we might be able to, in this remote environment, assess where kids are at the end because that might inform how we start in the fall.
Right.
And so that's that's kind of been the focus of our conversations. But I think you're raising an important point. And I certainly will bring that to the leadership team in our retreat next week. And, you know, we can think about that, that issue.
I'm sure the kids would thank me for the summer work.
Yes, we'll have them send their emails to you.
Everyone else whose idea.
I'll give you out your cell phone number, too.
Yeah. Okay, so here's what we're thinking in terms of cuts. So let me just say that we've been thinking about what is the scope? So in terms of backfilling what we think will be revenue streams that are significantly decreased and additional costs. And you know, again, there's something very speculative about this number. But we think that one million dollars is not unrealistic. And so we took that as our, we took that as our our premise. And again, the the premise here is that we're able to get our FY twenty one budget voted with the number that we proposed and that we're able to work with the town to stabilize the chapter seventy. So that's that's our assumption at this point.
And how much was it from stabilization that that you were?
Well, well, so, you know, our chapter seventy, if it's about six million, if there were a ten percent cut, that would be six hundred thousand dollars. If it were a twenty percent cut, it would be more than that. But I checked in with, you know, we've talked about it budget steering, and I checked in with Christopher Coleman today. The town has been great about engaging in these conversations. And we were talking about these kinds of numbers. And he has said that nothing has changed since we talked at budget steering and that this is how we're proceeding at this point. So it's not easy to get to a million dollars. So, um, it's not easy to get to a million dollars. Um, so as a starting position, we're proposing, um, that we eliminate 5.2 F T E teaching positions at the high school. And again, um, you know, we started by looking at what could be accomplished through attrition. And some can be accomplished through attrition, not all. And so, um, you know, I think that some of the specifics of where those F T E come from will, will still have to be finessed a bit in the master scheduling process. But I can tell you that some come from elective departments. And then it's pretty much spread across all of the core academic departments with the exception of math. And we had a lot of conversation about that. Our feeling is that the math curriculum is so sequential. And the skills, uh, you know, really have to sort of have some skills in place and build on those skills over time that we, to the maximum extent possible, want to maintain our class sizes, particularly for some of our level three math classes. And, um, so we're not looking at taking a cut there. But in other departments, pretty much across the board. I will say that, um, you know, while there certainly is an impact making these cuts at the high school, the, the master schedule is just, it's a big complicated schedule. And so I, I think that the impact for any one student wouldn't be that significant. In other words, if a student is attending, say, seven classes in the day, it's likely that one of their class sizes would perhaps be high as a result of this. But the way we would do it, it would be unlikely that any, any student would be going from class to class to class with high class sizes. So it's, you know, you know, part of the situation with the high, high school ma- master schedule is that you're able to kind of, you know, spread the impact around, so to speak.
When you, when you talk about high class sizes, what are you talking about?
Well, so, I mean, I would say higher than typical. So the good news right now is that we have fantastic class sizes in most of our high school classes right now. And the class size, the school committee class size guideline is, um, for the high school, a maximum of 28. And I think we can still stay within that. But, you know, we would see some 27s and 28s. Um, but, you know, we're not talking about 35 or anything, you know, like that. We're, we're, we're still talking in the realm of reasonable, I think. We are proposing eliminating one teaching physician at the middle school. Frankly, the middle school is pretty tightly staffed right now. You know, the enrollment at the middle school had started to decline and we took some incremental cuts at the middle school. And, um, I, I don't, I, I wouldn't feel good about eliminating more than that at, at the middle school, given their class sizes.
What department?
That it will, um, that will be in social studies. We have some retirements there and we looked at the class, we looked at the numbers and we think we can make that work, social studies. We're looking at eliminating one F T E elementary instructional assistant, which is actually related to, um, the next slide. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. We are proposing eliminating one, uh, one F T E elementary library, librarian position. And, um, just looking at staffing across the five schools differently for library. We're proposing, um, eliminating the K to 12 library director position, which is 0.4 F T E. And I'm sorry to have to put that on the table, but, um, we basically will sort of, um, have professional development for the library department and curriculum development come out of central office without the library director. In the FY21 proposed budget, we talked about, um, adding a new position, a 0.4 F T E Director of Safety and Security. We actually had started the process of, um, screening resumes for that this spring. I think we need to hold off on that. This is the kind of position that doesn't have to be in place in September, right? So we, we could make a different decision mid-year if we were feeling more confident about the financial situation. We had also proposed 2.0 F T E high school instructional assistance related to a couple of specific programs at the high school. We're now suggesting that we hold off on hiring, um, all but 0.5 of that, um, new 2.0 F T E. And then, um, we're proposing that we eliminate daily substitutes at the high school. And, you know, that's a, a, a change, but we think the high school culture is such, particularly now that we've all been working on remote learning, that, um, the plan could be that teachers provide, um, through Google Classroom assignments for kids when they're going to be absent. And that we would have kids work on those assignments like they do when they go to the library to calf now during their free periods and, um, not be staffing with daily, with daily substitutes. So when you add all of that up, it gets us to $790,000. Um, but really for the purpose of this exercise, we need to think of that as 690 because, um, some of these things are retirements. And so we would be counting on some amount of turnover. We've talked about turnover a lot in the budget. And, um, so I think we have to, to subtract out $100,000 in turnover that we were already expecting. And call this 690,000. So that was sort of our first tier.
So maybe we stop pause here because I know there's a bit of a different conversation. Other questions, comments from the committee?
These are all tough cuts.
Yes, they are. They are. I mean, I, I guess, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, so going to the library. So you're suggesting if by removing a 1.0 F T E, we then reallocate the remaining resources in a different way than we have been?
Yes, so in other specialist areas, art, music, P E, we, we staff across buildings.
Right.
So we don't have, we don't, for instance, have five art teachers for five elementary schools. We have art teachers who serve more than one school. We have historically tried very hard to maintain five library positions across five elementary schools in order to have the library staffed and open all the time, even when the librarians weren't teaching classes. And so that the librarians could also provide in-class support for teachers. What we would do is, um, we would just staff library the same way we do other specials, where we'd have librarians working across buildings.
So I guess a cop, so the security, so I know the security is in one easy to fill. I guess my only thing I have to say on that, I look at that in combination with the capital, those $100,000. And I, it, I understand it's, you know, we can always start it. I just, at some point, I just worry about continuing to kick the can down the road on this one. And I know there's a capital piece and there's another one. Um, and so I understand, you know, we, it's not, we, we haven't had it. So, you know, it's new. Um, but I just, it's one that I just could see, we get into next year, we postpone, we get into following year and we just, that's just my kind of just, as long as we're making momentum in the midst of kind of the role of chaos, um, I'm okay. Let's just be a little concerned on that one.
Yep, I understand.
Is there a chance of asking the, uh, police department to share in the cost of doing something like this? So this person could be partly, you know, on their budget and partly on ours for the future.
I don't know. And I, I, you know, I think, I just want to say again that, you know, the town is suggesting that they're prepared to stabilize the school department budget with the chapter 70 cut. And at some level, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's all coming from one revenue source in town, right? So I don't, I don't know to what degree that helps the situation. You know, and I, I, I do take your point, Tony. I think that maybe this is something that we should sort of pledge to revisit partway into the year.
Yeah.
And, you know, we might be able to take it on in January or, um, something like that, so. Okay, and so then, tier two, so here's where we get into elementary. So, um, we're proposing reduction of three F T E elementary classroom teachers. We do however, want to retain one, I should say, F T E teacher at Deerfield. As you know, we have two large singleton classes at Deerfield next year in grade two and grade three. I believe they're both at this point at, I think, 26. And, you know, we have been, we have been looking at that and we recognize that we want to put support in place for those classes. We had been thinking about instructional assistants. And on the prior slide, I said something about, um, an I A, eliminating an I A. We in fact currently have an I A in, um, what will be grade three next year, the current grade two. So we've been thinking about that, but, um, in conversation with Mr. Bommer, he has advocated, and I really would like to be able to support him, um, that even though they will be down a class section at Deerfield next year, rather than eliminating one of the, um, teachers, that we reallocate that teacher to co-teach in those large singletons at grade two and three. So the plan would be to have the teacher spend half the day in one classroom and half the day in the other. You know, these are classes that are projected to be three to four students over guideline. And this way we'd be able to have another skilled licensed, you know, veteran teacher in there for core academic instruction. And we will have a classroom space available at Deerfield next year. So I, I think we could really get creative about, um, having that co-teaching model work so that we can take kids out for groups. And, um, I think it's a good idea. So I'm hoping that we can keep that in place. But with the elimination of three F T Es, then we would be collapsing from three sections to two sections at three places in the district. So that would be grade three at Downey, grade three at Hanlon and grade four at Sheehan. We took a look at those numbers. I will say we did consider the placement of students in substantially separate specialized programs. So there are classes where the class size would be 24, for example, as a result of collapsing from three to two sections. And then we looked and said, well, you know, there are a couple of students in the class who are in, um, specialized programs where, um, for us, you know, substantial portion of the day, they're not in the general education classroom. So we looked at that and, um, we, we do end up with a, a, a couple of classes that are one or two students over the school committee guideline.
So you're trying to, classes, the largest class would be what, 24?
So grade three Downey, it would be 24 and 24.
Yeah.
The grade three at Hanlon would be 22, which is within guideline and 23, which is one over. And the grade four at Sheehan would be 24 and 25. And remember, the grade four guideline is different than the grade three guideline. So 24 and 25, one class size is within guideline and the other one is one over.
Classes in all of these, you have said, are being pulled out?
At Downey and Sheehan.
Okay.
Not at Hanlon.
Okay.
Yeah. So that, um, so that is $270,000, but then the similar calculation minus anticipated turnover. So, um, we think that represents a, a change in $195,000.
Right, you know, I guess let's pause there again before.
So in the, in the grade three Hanlon, you mentioned that was the one where the kids are not, uh, a number of them are not being pulled out, correct?
Yes, there, 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 yeah, there are no specialized programs at Hanlon.
Okay.
Right.
Um, so, and what, and the numbers there will be over guidelines?
No, one section would be, uh, 22, which is within guideline.
Yeah.
And the, the other would be 23, which is one over guideline. And this, this is a, um, a class, we've actually talked about this class quite a bit over, over the years, right? At one point, we thought we were going to have to collapse them before this. Um, but because we've been able to do the K, K1 model, was that just, I'm, I'm losing track of my years, Maya, but I think it was, um, just last year that we were able to, break the group into three sections again. So from the time this class has been in kindergarten, unfortunately, we've kind of been foreshadowing for people that our ability to keep them at three sections was sort of year to year. And I unfortunately think, you know, we're in a serious rainy day here and that this may be the moment that we need to collapse it.
This was the class, this was the grade last year where we went to three, right?
Yes.
I think we went to three last year.
Well, they, they didn't, no, they've been three all along. We've been able every year.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, but we had thought we were going to have to collapse them. And then when we saw our incoming kindergarten numbers, we were able to make a K K1 model work.
Okay, all right. Okay.
So I guess a different question. So the one I'd want to, I want, personally want to keep as close as I on all these is the Downey third grade. Now, I know, I know there's two specialized, even if the, if you don't count, is that two total in the grade?
No, no, four.
Oh, so it's four, yeah. Just because of, I just, well, I just want to keep an eye on that one. Because, you know, I, you know, we're, you know, you know, I know kindergarten is much more fluid typically than these grades, but sometimes you get a few kids to move in. Anyway, that's just my, keep, keep an eye on that one, I guess, is my.
And I, I will say that some of, some of these choices, just to be clear, is because we're looking at our incoming kindergarten numbers. And the numbers just aren't breaking very well, um, for kindergarten. So at both Sheehan and Martha Jones, for example, we're going to need three kindergartens. And they're going to be pretty small, 15, 15, 16. They were just too big to be two sections, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and again, with our guiding principles, we, we tried to commit to keeping K to two within guidelines.
And all of this, um, is conjecture at this point because we don't know what our budget, how much we'll have, is that right?
It's conjecture, but, uh, so the problem is, is that, that we don't have all the information we need. So the state budget, we won't know our chapter 70 nu- number until at least July, July. And, um, you know, the problem is you have to build master schedules and make teaching assignments based on some assumption. And it's just the, the fact in schools that you need to start the year, um, with a plan in place. And so I, I think we need to make a good guess at what we think our financial picture is and plan around that reality. So, you know, it's my, it's my best thinking is all I can say.
Okay.
I, I'm looking at my screen, but I can't see any of you. So I don't know, are we ready to move to the next slide?
Yeah, well, I didn't have a process question, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, all right, and so then we got to tier three. Um, and this was really bottom, bottom of the barrel. So I, I would prefer not to do this. We have proposed in our FY21 budget, 0.5 F T E middle school, a middle school ELA specialist. And I, we talked a lot about that during the budget process and it, it doesn't feel like a good time to me to be backing away from our intervention models coming off of, you know, this disrupted, period. And, uh, you know, we, we put here in tier three, 0.5 F T E administrative assistance. Again, there's a lot going on and they provide a lot of important support for principals. Um, so I would say tier three is reluctant. So much so that as we discussed the situation as a leadership team, and we had these conversations after I got the slides out to you in the packet next week. But we've talked as a district leadership team and the 18 people on the team would like to offer an alternative to this tier. And that is that, um, I and the, um, central office administrators and principals and assistant principals, um, would give back our contractual salary increases for next year, which doesn't get us to the amount of money in tier three by a long shot. Because I think this is $70,000 and so it'd be more. Um, because I think this is seventy thousand dollars and so it'd be more, you know, probably a little over half of that. Um, but we think that we would like to put that on the table and preserve, um, some other things here, like the ELA specialist.
I think that's,
Yeah, that's,
well, that you're offering that and that you do that, I think, you know, really, as hard as you work, I think you all deserve your, your, you know, your salary increase. I know, I fully appreciate that, I'm sure the rest of the committee does, so.
Yeah, I would say that that speaks volumes, you know, about our educators in this district. To do that in these unprecedented times when, you know, we don't know what the future holds and there's so much uncertainty, for you all to step up like that, uh, is, um, amazing. So, um, wow.
And without being asked to do it.
Right.
Hearing to do it, so, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you saying that, um, you know, I raised the issue for myself with the, the leaders in the district, and I have to say, they are working extraordinarily hard right now. But I think that they really have the sense that it's, you know, we're asking people to do hard things right now. We're having to ask some difficult things for our bargaining units and it, um, it, it feels like an important thing to do, to kind of lead from the front. So, um, I'm, I'm sort of putting that on the table because, for, for a lot of reasons. And, and we would like to be able to preserve the ELA specialist. And, um, we want to contribute to, we want to contribute to, to solving this problem.
Well, thank you for doing that. I mean, that's, this is a time too, I know I said times of uncertainty, but you all have more on your plate than, um, than in past years. And it's, it's a whole nother type of learning and, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm not speechless. I feel speechless, but I'm not, I'm, I'm, but I'm, I'm impressed. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, and thank you to all the teachers and, uh, we will not be forgotten.
No, thanks. Um, so I'm hoping.
Yeah, I'd echo that, and then, um, just the, so I, so I understand the, is the admin assistant, is that incremental new? Or is that like some, I just, yeah, remind me of that one?
No, it, no, it's not, um, so we do have someone retiring. And the, the idea would be that we would only hire in behind that person at like a fraction.
Got it, okay.
And, and it would probably be in more than one building. We would kind of incrementally shave in a couple of spots.
Okay, thank you, that's fine. Okay, makes sense, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so those, those are the tiers and that gets us, it gets us about where I think we, we need to be. Um, and so obviously, we, you know, wanted to have a conversation with school committee and, um, that would allow us to start making some plans and thinking about the schedule for next year. I'm going to stop sharing the screen here because, oh, there you all are, okay. It's like I've been talking on the phone with you. Great. Um, so, those are our thoughts.
Yeah, I, I think that was a really, um, thoughtful and, um, you know, just, it's, it's a tough situation we're in, I don't think anyone will deny that. And I think this was a very thoughtful list, I think the tiers were clearly very thought, thought out very carefully. Um, and there was clearly a lot of work that went into that. Um, I think it will be, you know, knowing that we need some sort of structure going forward. I think what you've proposed makes sense to me. Um, it'll be interesting to see what actually happens and, you know, maybe we can revisit these tiers, um, you know, four or five months from now or whenever we have more clarity. Um, I'd like, I'd like to do sort of a comparison of what we estimated versus what the reality is. But, um, you know, I think that, um, I think it was a very thoughtful analysis and reckon, the recommendations as well, so that's what I think. I don't have any other comments to it.
Other thoughts, questions?
Again, thanks so much for all the time you've put into this and the creative thinking you've brought forward and, uh, preparing for so much of the unknown. You know, I think you've got a pretty good coverage of, uh, you know, what we're going to have to face, not knowing, as your other superintendent said, you know, we don't know what the future's going to be yet, what money is is going to be yet. I mean, it's a crazy time, but thank you for all the time you put into preparing us for all these options.
Yeah, I have to tell, I, I mean, I, I feel like I need to say out loud, I actually think that the FY twenty-two budget development process is going to be even more challenging and, you know, this isn't, like, this isn't a one-year problem. Um, and so I just think we have to keep that in mind. We're trying to make our best guesses about this year, but by next fall, we're also going to have to be thinking ahead um, about that as well. And I just hope that clarity starts to emerge at some point. Um, because I feel like we're making some decisions right now that just aren't based on a whole lot of real data. And that's, you know, it's a nerve-wracking place to be, um, to, to speculate.
And I think it's that way in every industry. I mean, if you, if you look at teaching and learning as an industry, this is what's happening. Uh, we're making all kinds of decisions in our businesses, um, just stabbing in the dark. So it's a little, it's a little bit, um, unsettling, to say the least.
Yeah.
Very unsettling. But I do have one, we have such a great administration who's able to put something together like this that seems to be a good plan anyway.
They do have one piece of, uh, of good news. My wife loves to go through all these ranking systems. And this company called Nitch ranks colleges, schools, et cetera. It gathers data from the state, uh, uh, testing, federal testing, and their two thousand twenty ranking of school districts in Massachusetts. Uh, uh, Westwood Public Schools are ranked number six in the state of Massachusetts. Uh, and the system is ranked better than a lot of competitive districts we often look at. Like, we're, we're higher up and better than Newton, Wellesley, Wayland, Winchester, Acton, Boxborough, Edmond and Dover. And I think a lot of the credit for that deserves, goes to Emily and your staff and also to the people who have been around for twenty-seven years. By tuning the system to the point where, you know, I feel responsible for nothing, but they look at Josephine, what she's done. But it's a pretty impressive, uh, statement, you know, from a, an outside Pittsburgh-based group that just tries to use data systems, uh, to have, uh, put this system together.
Okay, great, um, thank you, Charlie. Um, so I guess, yeah, well, you just, I guess the final thing, I'd like to, and maybe as part of the capital, you know, I still do want to talk about capital insecurity. Um, yeah, I just continue, I just, in this chaos, I just don't want to feel like we're kicking the can down the order on that one, so. Um, okay, great, so why don't we move on if there's nothing else? Any other final thoughts? Um, so just to set up the next one, Emma and I talked, I think this next one's going to be very brief.
Yes.
Presentation, you know, I think the conversation we had is obviously there was a lot of progress made on the goals up until probably whatever it was, the end of February, March. Obviously, um, you know, things have changed, so, you know, while there's still, I think, progress, obviously, people had to refocus. So I didn't, but she just wanted to give a brief, I think, update on the, where we are.
Well, so with your permission, Tony, I think I'm going to go even more brief than what we had talked about. And because I'm, I'm seeing that we took a long time on the budget discussion. So I provided you, um, in your packet with a written report on district goals. And I would just echo that, you know, we sort of have four big strategic priorities around meaningful learning experiences, coherent, connected curriculum, healthy and supportive school community and facilities for the future. And, um, you know, we did make a lot of progress on those goals and I've articulated them and will be happy to answer questions about them. We did some curriculum reviews and whatnot. Um, I think facilities for the future, we've been talking about it every meeting, so you're well aware of what's been happening there. There were a couple of, um, priorities that did have to be postponed due to the closure. So we were, um, gearing up to engage in this, um, work to reexamine the middle school schedule and we contracted with a consultant and the days were on the calendar to, to launch it and that unfortunately had to be postponed after school closed. We had, uh, intended to form a school start time committee this spring. That also has been postponed and then, of course, we already talked about the hiring of the director of safety and security. So there were a few things that really, um, just were derailed. I would say that everything else, we were able either to accomplish or to still make significant progress. Um, and so I want to commend, you know, the team educators in the district, um, for what they were able to do, but maybe I'll just leave it at that and, and if there are any specific things that you'd like me to speak to, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the next update is on the project PDP submission.
Yes, so this is about our, um, building project. So as you know, we submitted the PDP to the MSBA, um, which included that educational plan that, um, you voted on. One of the discussions that's been happening throughout this process is how many classrooms we should be planning for under each design enrollment scenario. Um, the MSBA has a formula that's based on the design enrollment, uh, to figure out how many classrooms you would need to support that size student body. And for our design enrollment of five sixty, their formula suggests that we would need four classrooms per grade. They have a set of class size guidelines that are very close to our class size guidelines that they use. So for five sixty, it'd be four classrooms per grade, for six eighty-five, it would be five classrooms per grade. We had had some conversation earlier in the year about, um, the possibility of, of planning for additional classrooms, uh, to do five classrooms per grade for the five sixty and six classrooms per grade for the six eighty-five. The decision to do that, um, you know, would be substantial because they would not be part of the reimbursement from MSBA. So that would be all local dollars for that cost. At the time that we started planning for that in the PDP, we had a couple of enrollment projections and we decided that we should get a, a third set of enrollment projections done just to kind of triangulate things. We've now gotten those enrollment projections and I, I think that it, it's clear to me that the MSBA formula and the number of classrooms that they propose is sufficient. I feel comfortable in saying that there is, they're really, I don't think there is a need to plan for additional classroom space beyond what the MSBA formula provides. And in fact, I, I, having looked at the enrollment projections, I don't even think it would be financially responsible to do that. Um, so, you know, we've been sort of talking about this, uh, internally, but I, I think that when, correct me if I'm wrong, Maya, so the next submission, do they have to do a revised space summary? Is that how it works?
Yeah, I think in the PSR, we'll do a revised space summary. Um, and I just wanted to add that, you know, these projection enrollments are peak enrollments.
Peak.
Um, so it's really only, you know, on the, on day one, when the school opens, we're not going to be, if we can, you know, if we're in a five sixty school, we aren't likely to be at the five sixty number. So the additional classrooms that we were looking at were on top of the fact that, um, we weren't even going to fill up the school on day one anyway. So to Emily's point, you know, once we got that third enrollment projection, um, we, we did realize that, you know, the num, the, the MSBA numbers really did make sense. And we're more than comfortable, um, with the, you know, four classrooms at the five sixty and five classrooms at the six eighty-five. And I think we're at three classrooms with a three fifteen enrollment. Um, so, but yes, I think we would revise that in the PSR.
But that would be in the next phase, but we, we just wanted to bring that to your attention because we had been
Yeah.
talking about the possibility of additional classrooms earlier in the process.
Right.
There's no action needed.
Yeah, that's it, just an update.
Okay, great, if there's no further questions, so the next two items are kind of combined. Um, they're about the school committee calendar for the remainder of the year. In the summer, I think there's, um, given the situation, probably adding a couple of meetings in the summer. And then the next year's agenda, you know, uh, calendar as well. Um, so, I know, I know Carol, you'll be taking this over soon, soon hopefully. So, I don't know if there's any questions or comments.
Wait, Tony, what does hopefully mean? Do you not, no, you're not enjoying yourself?
I'm gonna, I've got this gallop to throw all the way.
Tony, am I going to see you sprinting from the, oh no, we're not, we're not meeting in a room, so.
Um, I guess my only comment, so I mean, I, if, I mean, obviously you can follow up online with people. I'd be January, I know we, and I don't, I'm not saying we need to, but sometimes historically, we had two in January. Like this year, we actually used both of them because of the, uh, school stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe just, I don't know, because next year could be, like you said, even worse budget. You may need more time, I'll leave that to you, I mean, you and Carol, that was just my only thought.
Yeah. Um, so I, I think you're right, I, and, and actually, it might be worth it just to pencil in a few extra dates. I think next year is going to be
Yeah.
You know, very uncertain and, um, there may just be months where we really can't go a month without having an additional meeting. And so I, I don't know what the committee thinks, is it preferable to sort of schedule those as we go along? Or to get sort of placeholders and save the dates in for, you know, meetings as needed?
I think we should definitely do two in January. Um, I think the rest of them, I'm happy to schedule on an as-needed basis. I think it's, it would be, maybe we know what months we think we should double up, but that seems to be much more of an organic process as we go along.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we, we, we play it by year at this point. I mean, if we end up moving back to, let's say we get out of this remote learning and remote working and all for a little while and we end up back in it again, um, schedules change, um, it actually becomes easier to schedule more meetings because, uh, you know, commitments change. But I think I, I would say, let, let's, let's wait unless it presents an issue for, for you all.
No, I think that's fine, so I, I guess what I would suggest is, why don't we put a second January date on the calendar? And I had just sort of put these dates out for discussion in case there were any known conflicts at this point. And then maybe I could bring it back in January and we could actually like vote the calendar for next year.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Okay, great, that's what I'll do. Okay, great.
Okay, um, I guess that's all the discussion, so, yeah, so then I guess, why don't you, so there's one item I kind of, so go ahead. Well, is there anything, so why don't we go to the school committee chair, is an updates? Is there anything on the school building project that, Maya, you want to update?
Um, you know, as, as we mentioned, we are now in the, we're working on the PSR. Um, the evaluation, so, uh, the Evaluation Criteria Subcommittee, it's a mouthful, is, is needing to evaluate the seven shortlisted options and will be recommending a final option to the SBC, to the full board. Um, and that will happen in the next week or so. Um, the SBC will take that recommendation. There will be the community forum where the, we will, the final option will be presented to the community. Um, community can provide feedback. That forum is actually on June fourth, it was originally scheduled for June second. That is, um, town election, so we have moved it to June fourth, Thursday, June fourth. Um, and then the SBC will hear about, they'll have a meeting just on sustainability options and finally, we'll make a final decision on the final option in mid-June. So by, you know, we've been promising and promising that we will have a final option, but we're getting closer to it, we're about a month away. Um, so that's where we are. And then that will be submitted to the MSBA in the PSR report in Ju, in July. And we expect to hear, you know, confirmation of that from the MSBA in August. So that's where we are.
All right, any questions on the school project? All right, all right, so next one, so the next topic, and I, this is online, but I didn't get it out through the packet. So the next topic is around kind of what we think as a committee is a process to address kind of budget changes like we're talking about today. Um, and part of this is I think historically, at least, I've been on the committee, I guess, only, well, four years. Um, we've had been pretty good times, you know, there might be a tweak here and there around class sizes. Um, typically in the, you know, um, late time, but I just thought it may be helpful for us to align on when, what threshold and when, um, we should engage in a commu, you know, committee on kind of changes. That was kind of the broad, so and I've got a short, I can get to it. so and I've got a short like we get to it if we can get to it
are you I I'm I don't understand are you talking about um there are some changes to the budget that we shouldn't be party to are you talking about timing
yeah it was just more what's the threshold you know so you know you could say let me just kind of I'm losing the so the question is like so in theory right if there's I'm making this say let's say there's a a small change right I make let's be extreme there's a thousand dollars of copy expenses that goes from one cost into another right do we presumably don't need to be informed on that or nor probably don't want to engage but there's other things like FTEs and or you know significant dollar changes right that I think I guess what's the the question is what's the threshold and principles that we want to hold ourselves that we should engage as a committee on is in because I don't I that that's the question I mean I guess I haven't I don't know at least in the four years I've been if we had that conversation
do you have an example in mind like something that um that came up in the budget that you thought oh we should have been privy to
no no it's more like it's more now it's the changes so it's so it's so example so so FTE changes do we think we the committee whether we should engage on any changes in FTEs like we talked about today as an example
Tony and I have kind of said you know next year the budget situation is pretty uncertain and we may have unanticipated expenses that things may happen and you know what what would the committee like to be informed about if we're having to make significant changes in how we're spending is that accurate I mean I think
talking about inform informing or approval
well both I guess
approval both
yeah I mean so I guess look there's I guess the question is we have a fiduciary responsibility right and there's subcommittees and and you know the department of revenue says that you we should kind of as a school committee be engaging us you know some you could go some committees go down to you know let's engage in any you know there's fifty hundred cost centers and any change we're gonna approve I'm not saying we shouldn't do that um there's others that might just say principles being FTE changes principles being some threshold of dollar change between say major cost centers you know Thurston High School Central Ed and so I guess it's more just do we have a quick I guess it's more kind of trying to tee up you know as we go through these changes should the committee you know where do we want to engage as a committee what are our principles is the question
is Tony is this because of the change because of the situation you're not talking
yeah the situation yeah normally we go through a budget process and normally at least I've been on we go through a budget process
right
and there might be a change in a you know
so you're talking about because of the pandemic
yeah because of the pandemic
alright okay so um because things can change things can change on a dime around here I mean as soon as the government governor speaks um then we have to make some changes that's what you're talking about
yeah exactly exactly
so the issue becomes um some tight timing
the dollar amount right isn't that what you're talking about at what point do you want
threshold
yeah
because we don't we don't wanna we don't wanna throw monkey wrench wrench into the process by saying we have to nitpick every oh every change I mean review every change is that
yeah yeah exactly and so example this this last conversation in theory I would say as a principle if we're making a million dollars in ten head positions we should discuss that and vote on it as a I mean FTE changes now these are significant ones
right well
yeah
is there a way and I'm still trying to make sure I'm understanding this so let's say that things are very volatile in the fall
yeah
and we have to make some quick changes I mean we get an update anyway from Emily um on what's going on so would that be could we include that as an item um in our updates
I think it's more than that though it's more than an update right because we'd want discussion
well no but I mean if it's in the update and it could be right before it happens then we can reach out and I I don't know because I I don't know what
prove it though I I'm not gonna be around but I mean do you guys are you planning to approve every change
my question so
well I think that's Tony's point right uh we're we need I think we need to find a balance between not handicapping the administration from doing their job but at the same time maintaining our fiduciary duty
right but so when I'm talking about when I'm talking about update maybe that's the wrong word it's the these are the considerations this is what we're going to have to do that would be a section of the of her um weekly update to us and then we could I mean speak up and say you know what before this if if we are notified of what this possibility is prior to it happening I'm not saying an update like we already did it and oh by the way here's here's the here's what we had to do it's more like this has come up um
a notice period
spending um uh a hundred thousand dollars on Corax wipes to wipe down the entire squ- I'm making the obviously and so putting it out to the committee to say alright and then we decide I don't I don't know I'm trying to think of again the best way to do this without as mayor said we don't wanna we don't want to slow down the process but we also don't want to be remiss in our responsibilities um for the budget so
yeah but I think that could work I mean I think that um some some sort of you know notice calling it a notice period here um you know some sort of this is what we plan to do please provide you know we can either set up additional discussion like we set up a meeting and we have additional discussion um I mean maybe that's the way to do it
so it's not just a look back it's a look forward
yeah
this is what we're thinking and it's and again and then the question comes to Emily I mean is that
but what triggers it right what triggers her putting it on the report
well yeah we don't need to solve that I guess the to me it was there was probably I looked at a little bit there was an FTE piece which we talked about like we were changing you know adding or changing to me that's clearly one and the other would be some dollar amount I don't know what the number is you know maybe between costs some not dollar amount that's not like you know like photocopies um some dollar amount that I would leave it to you know maybe you know we you come back with a recommendation I just think it would be helpful there is and I think I think for example today I mean we didn't put on the agenda but we should I think in theory vote I mean to offer addition if we've changed FTEs we should be voting as a committee
yeah no I agree with that I agree with that I think the FTE issue is easier to delineate than the dollar for the dollar I would I would look maybe to Emily and her team and say what do you think is practical because you know I don't want to say ten thousand dollars and then
on the on the dollars um piece one of the norms that I think we've had in my new year um we've historically not made budget transfers so we for the most part um lived within the budget and sometimes if we overspend in a particular line we balance on the bottom line to the close out the fiscal year there I can see a reason in informing and flagging to the school committee maybe more frequently than the quarterly reports where we would otherwise notify you for exceeding budget in a certain area so if it's gonna be significant to to Tony's point or like Carol's example we could certainly start to flag that and say like this is an area where we're seeing expenses over what we've budgeted and significantly over and and it's out of line with prior years and it's a reflection of the response to the pandemic so you could certainly raise those as conversation
let me ask our our resident historian
yeah some of the are gonna be time sensitive so that point is important as well
yeah
but
sorry I didn't mean to interrupt
yeah let the next person
I I was just I was just curious Joseph have we had a time
no
you know I know with the with the recession two thousand eight um where we had some some weird times or even prior to that with a prior superintendent was there um a any input on this and any um
when 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 the ERA the education reform act came into being and I think that was nineteen ninety-three is that right Emily
yes
ninety-three
ninety-three yep
okay I remember calling I remember calling the Department of Education and speaking to who who was the attorney Emily someone you know oh gosh um
I don't know
and I asked her when we when they make a line item change does the committee have to get involved in making that change or can the committee get involved and they were unclear but basically what she said is it becomes so cumbersome to try to do that
right
impedes the administration's ability to run the system so no we never did that you know I mean the superintendents have always informed us if there was some drastic change but not you know even if you were buying you know a hundred thousand dollars worth of wipes I would assume that they were necessary and that the superintendent didn't have to you know inform the committee that that was being done
so we should get yeah I know okay so we should get guidance because I think Glenn tend into the different Department of School Committees has shared a different perspective
okay
the department of revenue says is kind of fiduciary so I know we we know I know it's getting late and got like another thirty minutes so um but I think I mean I think when there's FTE changes it should be discussed and voted on at least my view and if again I don't know what the threshold it's not two thousand dollars but you know to me it's at least in my view but but that's maybe I'm just one person so
all right we can think about it and maybe Emily and Luma if you guys have recommendations or ideas and um I think it'd be helpful to hear from you as well
yes
okay great um alright so why don't we we'll come back to new business why don't we do the action items um and then we'll come back to new business include with that so annual vote on school choice um do I have a volunteer read this motion this is our annual vote vote and maybe explain it first this is our annual vote you probably explained it better than I can Emily
so we the school committee votes annually about whether or not Westwood will participate in the school choice program which would if we did participate would allow students from other communities to attend school in Westwood and I would just say that um historically the Westwood School Community has the Westwood School Committee has declined to participate in the school choice program but you are required to take a vote annually and we have to submit the outcome of your vote to the Department of Education
Joseph I think you should read it
yep absolutely
fancy motion
last time okay where am I gonna find it
so we vote if we vote yay on this which is declining school choice
well so I think the motion Joseph is gonna read is to decline participation and so yes if you want to decline the participation you would vote aye yeah
you want me to read
the whole thing
you have to read the whole thing yeah
great okay whereas the educational reform act of nineteen ninety-three I was right requires enrollment of non-resident students under the school choice provision unless the committee votes by June first not to participate and whereas the school committee provision takes away money from the sending district and awards it to the receiving district whereas the Western our pupil expenditure is greater than the maximum allowable reimbursement which means desperately subsidize each choice student and whereas there is no provision for selecting students better fit Westwood's educational system and whereas once Westwood accepts a pupil it must keep the pupil through graduation even though Westwood's demographic situation might change considerably and whereas it is likely that a number of students will return to the ascending districts or otherwise leave Westwood thus creating a potential income loss now hereby be it resolved the Westwood School Committee respectfully declines to participate in the school choice program with the provision that should surrounding school districts subsequently and prior to June first decide to accept the provisions of of school choice the Westwood School Committee reserves the right to do likewise in order to protect its fiduciary interest in this matter
thank you Joseph uh do we have a motion to uh
that was the motion wasn't
that was the motion you need a second
I'll second
alright so I need to do roll call on this uh um Joseph Jowdy
yay
uh Carol Lewis
yay
Charlie Donahue
yes
Mayor Plotkin
yes
uh Anthony Mullen yes alright great thank you for bringing it Joseph alright let's go through the minutes um vote to approve minutes from April tenth two thousand twenty do you have a motion
so moved I'll second
any discussion alright let me roll call um Joseph Jowdy
yes
Carol Lewis
yes
Charlie Donahue Mayor Plotkin
yes
Anthony Mullen yes alright do I have a motion to vote to approve the minutes from April twentieth twenty eighth two thousand twenty
I like a motion
second second alright uh what's your roll call Joseph Jowdy
yes
uh Carol Lewis
yes
Charlie Donahue Mayor Plotkin
yes
and Anthony Mullen yes alright finally uh two more um motion to approve the minutes from April thirtieth two thousand twenty you have a motion to approve those minutes
so moved
second
any discussion alright um oh Joseph Jowdy
yes
Carol Lewis
yes
Charlie Donahue Mayor Plotkin
yes
and Anthony Mullen yes and the final minutes to approve it's from May eleventh two thousand twenty do you have a motion to approve those minutes
so moved
a second
second
alright our roll call Joseph Jowdy
yes
Carol Lewis
yes
Charlie Donahue
yes
Mayor Plotkin
yes
and Anthony Mullen yeah yes I always forget myself nine o'clock is gonna start to not act as well okay great so why don't we move back to new new business so we have um some thank yous and recognitions I'd first like to thank our senior representative um you've been a great asset to the um thank you I guess just right you've been a great asset we've really enjoyed having you thank you for your contributions um with the team so there is there is a gift that we traditionally give of swag to the the school that the seniors going to unfortunately it's caught down in a ship shipping yard in Florida if I could share this maybe let me see if I can share I do I did try to do something instead let me see if I can say that can you see this
oh yes it's coming up
congratulations
we can see it now yep
I can't see it I can see it thank you so much
so congratulations shall we hear you're off to Wellesley
yes I am
fantastic
nearby nearby
congratulations I have a niece there she loves it
so we have Wellesley swag on the way that should be arriving soon we're sorry that it's not here on time
yeah but thank you so much I really appreciate it I really did enjoy all of the meetings and that I attended
well thanks for your input because it's important
yes and congratulations and enjoy college
keep in touch
what happened where are we
I think Tony froze
Tony froze
our fearless leader has froze
he's down in the docks getting it
uh-oh
I know this is
Byster
oh wait I think he's
he's left the meeting hopefully he's coming back
so I think he's coming back
okay
there we go
sorry
there it is
alright last time we do that oh wow anyway anyone else have yeah anyway other comments sorry
I think we said a few words while you were frozen there Tony
alright perfect alright no more switching uh so the second uh the next uh recognition is for Joseph Jowdy um I thank you for her amazing twenty-seven years I think lots of people want to say stuff um I think everyone on the committee but why don't I start with you Emily um
where is she do you see her
I know you gotta move back and there we go
like Joseph I was trying to to just inch out of the frame there so so I Joseph uh it is my hope and expectation that we are gonna be able to have a big party for you at some point where I will do a I hope be invited to do a proper speech where I will do a, I hope be invited to do a proper speech, where I get to talk about all of the ways that I think you are remarkable, and to thank you for your service. But I'm just going to say to tonight that I think you're remarkable in many ways, but specifically as superintendent, I can think of no more, no better role model than you for all of the students in Westwood about what it means to be part of and to serve a community. So I want to thank you for that. I will have lots more to say at some other point, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to miss you a lot.
I'm going to miss you all a lot.
Why can't we see your face right now?
I can see you.
There you are.
Charlie, do you want to have a comment?
Joseph, thanks for your, your 27 years. You've had probably a more impact on our system than anybody. It's been a pleasure serving with you, I've learned an awful lot from you. You will not get away, we will always be drawing on you for help. My favorite Joseph story, I have to title this one. This was at the Medco banquet last year, and all the Medco kids are in there, and they honored Joseph.
Oh, geez.
And they said, Joseph, many years ago, when the Medco kids were stuck in Westwood for a play or some evening activity, they went to her house and slept on her couches and the floor. She was like a stepmother to all the Medco kids that were stuck in Westwood. And they were, they were thrilled with you, Joseph, for what wonderful hospitality he's shown to them. But thanks so much, and again, we're going to be asking you for help for a long time left, so don't disappear.
I hope so. Thank you, Charlie. It's been a pleasure to serve with you, too.
So I'll go next. I mean, I'll just echo everything else, and it's been great to be with you. You've always been, like I think I said, told many people, so practical, and I've always appreciated your mentorship. And always, you've always put the kids first, which I really, that's probably the thing I always remember and learn from you, and I'll hopefully try to continue that, so thank you, thank you for your service. Maya?
So I have a lot to say. So I've known Joseph since I was five years old. She, Raymond, and the boys were the first family, one of the first families that my family became friends with when we moved to Westwood. And I grew up calling her Auntie Joseph, and only stopped after I moved back to Westwood, had kids, and she said, for God's sake, stop calling me Auntie. I also remember Joseph, when you first joined the school committee, it was, I think, a couple of years after I had graduated, so I didn't get the benefit of you, but I have definitely taken more than my fair share since then, since I joined, and your advice and your guidance have been invaluable. I think you care about the students of Westwood and about the town more than anyone I have ever met. And this town is so lucky to have had your service for so many years. I'm going to try not to cry. You've been my mentor, you're going to continue to be my mentor, because I'm going to keep calling you. But more importantly, you are my very dear friend. So, thank you for decades of friendship and decades to come.
Thank you very much. You all got to cry.
All right, Carol.
All right, all right, lady. 10 years I've worked with you, and it has been fun, it has been a privilege, it has been a pleasure. Without you, this school district would not be what it is today. And so as a parent in the district, I thank you for that. And as a school committee member, I'm going to miss, like others have said, your guidance, your perspective, your insight. And I have, I know you are so modest all the time, but I want you to know that I, and so many of us, have a tremendous amount of respect for you and admiration. So don't forget that. I'm going to miss serving with you on this committee. And I want you to know, I mean, others have said this, but I've heard this not just from my fellow school committee members tonight, but from parents in the district over the years. They all say, parents and teachers alike have told me that Joseph always puts all the children and the teachers first. And that is why you are an effective and beloved school committee member. So, Joseph, Emily spoke about, and you know, we were going to have a celebration at some point when we can all be together in the room. But we need, we want to honor you tonight, and to honor and memorialize your 27-year commitment to Westwood. So it's my privilege to announce the dedication of the High School Little Theater to be known now and from this day forward as the Joseph Jowdy Theater. So, we all look forward to celebrating this dedication with you and celebrating all that you have done for the town in the not-too-distant future. And always remember, Joseph, that as a resident of this town, we welcome your input during public participation.
But only two minutes.
So we're meeting in the Joseph Jowdy Theater.
Identify myself.
My dear.
Oh, my God, this is too much. I don't even know what to say. I I think I said before, it has really been a privilege to serve on the school committee. I've learned so much, I've enjoyed it, I've made so many tremendous friends. It's just been really a large part of my life. I know I'm going to and I thank you all for everything. Guys are great, you're going to do a terrific job going forward, I know you have your hands full. Anything I can do to help, you know, just call on me, but I know, I know it's being left in great hands. And you'll do a terrific job. The administration, Emily and the staff have been terrific. John. I so enjoyed working with all of the people that have worked so hard to develop schools and make them the great place that they are now for the kids of Westwood. So, thank you so much. And I'll be.
Thanks, Joseph.
I prepared something I didn't expect.
You're going to have more time to talk, we'll make you speak at the gathering, so.
Exactly.
Thank you, guys.
Great, good. Thank you, Joseph. Good, so I think that's all the business. The final piece of the executive session, so I'd like a motion to executive session to conduct a collective bargaining session and to discuss strategy with respective litigation, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the school committee if the discussions were held in open session. The committee will not return to public session. Do I have a motion to move to this decision?
So moved.
Second.
All right, let me just take a roll call, Joseph Jowdy.
Yes.
Carol Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Donahue. Maya Plotkin.
Yes.
And Anthony Mullen, yes. All right. Thank you, Westwood Media, John and Connor. Just let me know when it's.